I hear my call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Wilmette Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, June 17th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Principal Kelly. Principal Kelly Jackson has Wilmette Junior High School students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Each year at our spring recognition rally and at graduation, we enjoy celebrating the athleticism and sportsmanship of our WJHS athletes, as well as students who display qualities of scholarship, fellowship, and citizenship in all of their classes. While many of our students demonstrate these qualities, each year we take our time out to recognize a few students who stand out from the rest. This year, the recipients of our John Flotner Outstanding Athlete of the Year Award were Charlotte Conkins and Jake Feigen. These two students showed us that they contribute to the success of their teams, they participate for the love of the game, and they are passionate about athletics. They put the team above themselves and represent their team with dignity, maturity, and responsibility. This evening, Charlotte is joining us. Charlotte, can you share a little bit about your sport and what you enjoyed about being an athlete at Wilmette Junior High?
Yeah, so I did cross-country basketball and track, both as a seventh grader and as an eighth grader, and that was really fun. For basketball, as a seventh grader, I got to play with the eighth graders. So that was a good experience for helping me like build a little bit more confidence. And then as an eighth grader, I got to take on a little bit more of a leadership role. And then track and cross-country was a wonderful way to make friends, you know, exercise and endorphins, you're always very friendly. And both were challenging but very fun. So I really had a great time as an athlete at WJHS.
Charlotte should also be recognized. Her blackout poetry was recently published in the New York Times. She submitted it through her eighth-grade writing teacher, so that's a pretty huge honor for her. This year at graduation, we had eight eighth graders who were recipients of the Eighth Grade Tri-ship Award. This recognizes students who stand out from the rest in the area of scholarship, fellowship, and citizenship. The eight students who received the tri-ship at graduation were Merrill Parker, Amelia Dobek, Tiger Lee, Lydia Vesalo, Andrew Hepner, Kira Powell, Kelly Chiarelli, and Trevor Burns. Andrew and Trevor are here to join us as well. Andrew and Trevor, can you each share something about that you're going to miss now that you're leaving WJHS? Andrew, I'll start with you.
One thing I'll miss about WJHS is how they mix games with learning. And we play these games on our iPads with multiple-choice questions, and it was a good way to be a bit competitive, but also learn new topics or practice them at the same time.
Oh, one thing I'll miss is all of my teachers and friends making it feel like a community, always asking me how my day is and making me feel good when I'm down.
That's awesome. We'll miss you guys too. We want to thank you for all of your hard work in District 39 and wish you the best in your next steps.
If you'll please do ask for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first action item is to approve the District 39 Board of Education Resolution condemning hate and deepening the district's commitment to a positive school environment. Ms. Turnwell.
The events that transpired at WJHS on June 5th, 2019, were disturbing to us all. While the Jewish community was singled out, the words and symbols were not just about hate against one group, but an attack on our entire community. For the District 39 Board of Education, this was a call to action. We have more work to do. This is not to diminish in any way the well-founded emotions reverberating through our Jewish community. There has been a rise in both local and global antisemitic incidents, which adds justifiable cause for concern. Creating a positive school climate is a longstanding priority in District 39 and was established as a strategic goal in 2016. A statement of inclusion was adopted in 2017 representing a set of ideals that we continue to stand behind. Quote, "District 39 believes inclusion plays a vital role in student growth. We are committed to providing a safe and equitable learning environment that fosters a mindset of empathy, respect, and belonging for all District 39 students and staff. By respecting each person's unique identity, perspective, and learning style, we create a stronger community. We honor differences including races and cultures, genders and sexual orientations, abilities and aspirations, identities and affiliations, socioeconomic economics, and worldviews. Embracing diversity prepares our students to thrive in an increasingly complex global community." Much effective work has been done to establish a culture of empathy. However, there is room for improvement, and the district is committed to further challenge hate within the school community. We hear stories of bullying, harassment, and intolerance within our community. Some are reflections on historical events, but many are more recent. Most concerning is an echo perception that nothing will be done to make it better. We must increase the level of understanding across our schools and community about the threats posed by hate and intolerance. The district is committed to working with outside experts to further challenge hate and improve the climate within our school community. Change can only occur when all members of the school community are engaged. We must all be equipped with the skills to challenge hate in all its forms. The desire for change is essential, but desire is not enough. For all these reasons, we resolve to stand as a board against all forms of hate. Let our district set an example for others. The District 39 Board of Education will not tolerate any form of hate or discrimination. Let this resolution be the impetus for positive change and inspire all of us to take the steps needed to eliminate hate within our District 39 community. Resolution condemning hate and deepening the district's commitment to a positive school environment, whereas Wilmette School District Number 39 remains committed to providing a safe and equitable learning environment that fosters a mindset of empathy, respect, and belonging for all district students, staff, and community members. And whereas Wilmette School District Number 39 Policy 7.20 prohibits any conduct that harasses, intimidates, or bullies a student on the basis of actual or perceived classifications, including race, color, nationality, nation, origin, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or religion. And whereas Wilmette School District Number 39 Policy 7.818 states that the district will not tolerate aggressive student behavior, including bullying or harassment of any kind. And whereas the District 39 Board of Education adopted a statement of inclusion in 2017, which embraces the ideas, ideals of respect, diversity, and belonging for the entire Wilmette Public School community. And whereas the Wilmette School District Number 39 administration has implemented numerous programs, curricula, and protocols designed to promote inclusion and discourage bullying and harassment within Wilmette Public Schools, now therefore be it. And it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of School District Number 39, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. The Board of Education condemns any and all forms of hate and discrimination. The Board of Education will work towards ensuring a school environment free of hate. The Board of Education empowers the district administration to promote inclusion and discourage bullying and discrimination within Wilmette Public Schools. The Board of Education directs the district administration to commit to and present a clear, actionable, timely, and sustainable plan to reduce instances of harassment and intolerance throughout Wilmette Public Schools. The Board of Education supports all Wilmette School District staff, students, and families in working together towards eliminating all instances of prejudice, hate, and discrimination from within the Wilmette community, dated this, the 17th of June, 2019.
I seek a motion to approve the District 39 Board of Education Resolution condemning hate and deepening the district's commitment to a positive school environment. So moved. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Oh, actually, at this time, would the board like to discuss the motion? Yes?
I wholeheartedly support this resolution and am deeply grateful to Ellen for her work on this. This, I believe, may be some of the most important work we do as a board. There's no doubt in my mind that the district and the administration care about and are committed to this issue, but it's clear there's more work for us to do. This work, that of understanding, acknowledging, and shifting biased thinking, is daunting and doesn't happen quickly. But if we truly are to be leaders in this area, we have to be willing to hold ourselves accountable. I look forward to really digging in, hearing a tangible and actionable plan, and bringing about something positive out of the situation that has been so unsettling for our community.
Other board members?
I want to thank Ellen for her leadership on this and for your remarks, Amy. I apologize for reading my response, but I think I might get emotional and I don't want to lose my train of thought. I had an experience on Saturday night that further crystallized my thinking about these disturbing, disturbing recent and not-so-recent events. I have a son who just finished seventh grade, and he has had the good fortune to spend the past year attending the bar mitzvahs of many of his friends. This past Saturday was no exception. I dropped him off in Eden's Plaza and watched him get on a bus full of other excited boys his age and paused to reflect on what it was that they were doing. And I was overcome with emotion. On the surface, they were a bunch of thirteen-year-olds going to play whirlyball, but then I asked myself, why are they going to play whirlyball, aside from whirlyball being awesome, of course? They were going, they were doing this because they were celebrating a rite of passage that their friend had gone through earlier that day, where he, their friend, became a man in his Jewish faith tradition. And sitting there watching and listening to those boys through the open bus windows, it occurred to me that indeed they were all becoming men. You can see it in their faces, you can hear it in their deepening voices. In five years, they will all be adults. What kind of world will they and will we live in when they reach adulthood? What will our community look and feel like then? I for one want them and all of us to live in a society where we celebrate and rejoice in our wonderful differences and in what makes us unique. And where on their path to adulthood, we celebrate when our kids get called to the Torah, or get baptized, or get confirmed, or finish a month of fasting for Ramadan, or make the brave decision to come out, or go through any of the myriad of milestones and everyday successes that they will all go through. Let's work together to make our community and our schools a place where this can happen.
Thank you.
I just want to say briefly, thank you to Ellen, but thank you to all of the board members. It's a pleasure serving on a board where we have, from the very beginning, a lot of support and consensus for this idea. I think one of the things that I want to reflect on is that it can be easy to pass resolutions that don't have a lot of concreteness behind them. I think one of the things we're doing tonight is saying that when we passed a statement of inclusion roughly a year ago, that was meaningful to us and we're going to stand behind that. I also want to say, and I think I'm echoing, I know what I've heard from several board members, that this is a, this is a step. There's a lot more work we're going to do after this. So I think for me, and I think it's true for others, we will recommit ourselves tonight, but we recognize that we're going to do much more. And I also wanted to say thank you for Lisa for leading us on this.
I just had a couple real quick, obviously echoing the very well-thought-out and prepared statements and the effort that Ellen put into this in particular. I'm looking forward to regular updates on this topic. I think this has to be something that, that we have a certain cadence of bringing it up and discussing it and that it doesn't become, again, just a resolution that we revisit a year from now and say, you know, this was a good resolution. So I'll be, you know, the board will be working on it, but that's one of the areas that I think that's important, is that this is, remains top of mind and doesn't just kind of drift into the background.
Other comments?
I'm going to switch my comments around a little bit. I was going to end by saying, I thanking everybody here for collaborating on this. It was a true collaboration and everyone really rallied together and worked really hard on this. And I think just, it just really showed a true belief, a real true belief in what we're doing, and I just so appreciate that. And I also appreciate the statements that have already been there and that need to be prepared for this evening. And my statement, I'm going to read a statement that I prepared, and the point of it isn't to make this negative. This isn't about being negative, but I really feel, as a member of this board and of this community, who also happens to be a Jewish mother, I feel it's extremely important to put the events that transpired at WJHS on June 5th in perspective. Within just the past month in Chicago, we witnessed attempted arson attacks of a synagogue and Jewish Community Center in Lakeview, swastika and antisemitic threats on an elementary school playground in Wakanda, yearbooks being recalled in Highland Park, Oak Park, the Chicago Lab School, and other schools, featuring kids playing the circle game with hand gestures that have now become synonymous with white nationalism. It's also significant to note that in the past two years, the Anti-Defamation League reported a 46% increase in antisemitic incidents at K through 12 schools across the country. 2018 saw the third highest incident rate of antisemitic, antisemitic attacks. Where is this going? I can speak louder. 2000, I will speak louder. Do you want to go to the mic? 2018 saw the third highest incident rate of antisemitic attacks against Jews and Jewish institutions reported by the ADL in over forty years, reflecting a 48% increase in incidents since 2016. These are actual events and statistics, and they're real causes for concern. Why am I citing these statistics, you may ask? It's been said that the rise of antisemitism is like the canary in the coal mine of hate. I believe this to be true. I also believe that what happened here was not an isolated incident. And while I think it's crucial to acknowledge and understand the fear that many of us in the Jewish community actually live with right now, I think it's more important to understand this incident in the greater context of the power that those words and symbols hold over us all. The point is that we're not alone, and images and messages such as those posted at WJHS are intended to elicit fear, and they accomplish their objective in a climate that is already fearful. Do we live in fear all the time? Are we a fearful community? No. Do I want us to be? No. But I want us to have our eyes open. As I noticed previously, what happened last week, well, now two weeks ago, was not just about one group, it affected us all. Furthermore, antisemitism is not, is only one form of hatred expressed within our schools. Sadly, the cultural biases seems far more widespread and systemic, and it's clearly affected many of our students in all of our schools. And once again, I'm going to reiterate, I am so part, I'm so proud to be a part of this resolution today with all of you. This took all of us, and everybody did not hesitate to step up and stand behind this and work on this together. So I thank you all for that, and I think this is a really important turning point in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Turnwell. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your sentiments, and I also really appreciate that this resolution is actually a call to action, not just a condemnation of others. And with that, I'm going to ask that the motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The ayes have it. Motion carried. We move to approve all the minutes. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2019, Board of Education meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 20, 2019, Board of Education meeting. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
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 The motion carries by general consent. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and we are all among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. When moving to public comments, we ask that people speak only when called upon, and that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward to the podium. I remind all guests, use the microphone, state your name and community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Dan Johnson, here in Wilmette, on a different topic, talking about school buses. So my daughter and son go to McKenzie, and we've got those seatbelts that you might remember from your days in the school bus. It's a long strap with a metal hook at the end. It's in a picture of one day, the strap went flying over the seat and bashed my little daughter in the head, she got all bloody. You know, her friend did it by accident. And then oddly, three months later, my daughter was the accidental perpetrator as well, and tossed it up and bashed her friend, almost got her eye. You know, the transportation coordinator was nice, they said they're going to try to, you know, buckle them up and have a safety conversation, but my ask is for you guys to consider requiring the vendor to install those retractable seatbelts that we're all used to, where it's not just a long strap, but then when you pull it, it goes back so that these things aren't weapons. Unintentional, you know, these are, my daughter's a kindergartner, so it's not like, you know, they're chucking them around, but they are, you know, liability, and I'd ask you to consider asking our vendor to install some retractable seatbelts so we don't have this issue going forward. On a totally different topic, I got a twofer. I happen to be on the library board, and I asked my colleagues if, for permission, to establish a committee to see if we can start meeting with other elected officials, to see if we can get creative, sort of, you know, neighbor to neighbor that happen to be elected, to see if we can start collaborating more, try to think outside the box, right? We've got four governments that are, essentially, we kind of operate as silos, but serve the same people, the same people pay for us, so we should think about how we can maybe, you know, share resources or do programming together, or think about, you know, renting our roofs out to a solar company or something. So I'm hoping that my president will create this committee, hope to come back to you so we can come up with some neat, creative ideas about, you know, driving efficiencies and coming up with new services, maybe not everybody sending a catalog to all the same people every couple of months. So I appreciate your volunteer service, and I want to acknowledge that I'm glad I got to be here for a raised last one. Thanks for all your work and appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other others who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Thank you. It's great to be back in District 39. Just a few words, Dr. Leckler. I had the pleasure to serve with you, eight years as a Board of Education member, and I just want to thank you for all the great work you've done, your leadership, and your work in specialized education, your work for inclusion for all students. One of the things that I remember most about you is many difficult issues come before the Board of Education, and your ability to diffuse difficult situations, your ability to calm parents down when they have an issue with their student or parent issue. Just wanted to say thank you and a great job, and look forward to seeing you in retirement.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nina Friedman, and I'm an incoming eighth grader and sixth graders in this district. My husband attended District 39 Schools K through 12, and I am a clinical social worker. I'm also the grandchild of Holocaust survivors, and my family has committed itself to telling our story and the story of others for the purpose of education, so we can learn from the past to impact the future. While I am pleased with the resolution condemning hate and deepening the commitment to a positive school environment, the recent incident is not the first time antisemitism and racism has shown its ugly face in this district. And it is disappointing that it took a bomb threat connected to hateful antisemitic language and swastikas for the district and administration to not sweep this under the rug and dismiss this type of behavior as kids being kids, or not fully understanding what they were saying or doing, and not implementing serious enough consequences that the district, consequences, sorry, not implementing serious enough consequences to be impactful. I am eager to learn what consequences the district will bring regarding future incidents of this magnitude, as well as less visible or physically harmful incidents like racist bullying, harassment, and intolerance on the playground or on the bus. I appreciate this district's commitment to inclusion and encouragement of our students to be upstanders and report things, but I want to see the district focus on teaching our children and families at all ages about tolerance, acceptance, kindness, and empathy towards others, especially others who are different and marginalized. I'm looking forward to learning about what the district plans to do with this call to action resolution, and I want to know what we can do as parents to help. If you are creating a committee of parents to help address this, please put my name on that list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Squares Doyle in Wilmette. I have a third, an incoming third grader at Wilmette, and I would just like to echo exactly what you said, and so please add me to that list. I would love to be on some committee where there's parent representation for how to tackle this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sartajit Singh, and you can see I'm a visible minority. I never faced racism when I was in India. I came from India, and I come from a very homogenous society. So I experienced racism through my son, and this started in Central School where he was in second grade. So my son goes to a communion because we are called, and it's called North Shore Club. And there is one Jewish family who is also there, and there is a second grade kid who comes to the mother and tells her that you are not required into this North Shore community. And she asked why, and I am invited, and she says, and the kid says to her, you are a Jew, don't you remember 1990, 1991? And she shared those things when, when my son was in second grade. So we said, okay, maybe this is a silo event, and we said, okay, because we never faced that. And then slowly, gradually, my son started facing racism, which was misguided. Kids started calling him a Jew. People used to call him Egyptian. Kids started calling him slaves of Pharaohs. It started way back in third grade in Central School. It started, then it went down to fourth School. It started, then it went down to fourth grade as well. And it's not only the boys, and you will be surprised, the girls too. And we gave their names to the principal, to the school teachers. No action was taken. Then he went to fifth grade. Again, the same kids, boys and girls. Now the group is becoming bigger. More boys comes in, more girls wants to join in. And they are not only giggling around, they're equally vocal, vocal on the thoughts of monkeys. Sometimes people say slaves. Sometimes people are misdirected hit words Afro Americans. One of the guys comes, his name is already with Mr. Dubner. He comes and says, they were doing a social studies project in fifth grade and they were talking about how slavery was there during civil war. And the guy comes and says to my son, a slave, this will be your owner. And the owner is a white, Anglo-Saxon Protestant Jew. And my son had no idea about it. And he was like, what are you saying? And he reverts back and says, just listen to your master. And he came back and he told me everything. And I was like, why is this kid doing that? So I have to dig and Google it just to figure it out what kids are doing it. And these are basically things as if like I'm revisiting history, as if like I'm living in Germany in 1930s, as if I'm living in Europe in 1910s. And I was like, I came to America to be a part of the future, to be something, a creative society where everybody's learning to be a better person. So are they going back? Can I continue?
We need to wrap up. I'm sorry. Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Michael Hemelfar. We live in District 39. We have two kids who went through the district. They're in high school now. We have a fifth grader. We're also Jewish and we actually have an Asian son. So we, it's sort of a double whammy when it comes to things you have to deal with in this district. So I appreciate the resolution and I appreciate all the sentiment and the thought behind it. But, you know, I come from the business world. In the business world, you talk about what specifically are you going to accomplish and when are you going to accomplish it. My feeling with this resolution is it's great talk, but I really want to know what you guys are going to do and when are you going to do it. And I hope that you will report back to us with a very specific plan. That's my first point. The second point is, I also heard from the resolution, you talk about education and teaching children to be more tolerant. And I do believe that it's great to work towards ensuring we won't have these types of incidents, but I also think you definitely zero a tolerance policy too. So there has to be the consequences when these kids do these things. And sure, the kids might not know, but you know, in my opinion, they're getting it from somewhere, right? They're getting it from their parents, they're getting it from other people in the community. And I think it's up to the school board to really stand up to what they really believe is right and put their, you know, words into action. And so those are my two points. I appreciate the resolution, but I really would like to hear what you're going to do and when are you going to get it done.
Hi, my name is Jen Merziger. I have three kids in the schools. We're a third generation through Ramona all the way through Nutria. First, I want to say that I appreciate everything that the board has done and what the parents have done to create these positive schools. I adore my kids' friends. They are polite, they are wonderful children. And that's a great credit to our community, the parents, the teachers. They have excellent manners and they have mostly, most of them have a respect for a wide variety of differences. However, the district's commitment to diversity is not promoted in all homes, as the gentleman before me said, and there's only so much the school can do. I had a seven-year-old girl come into my home and fling antisemitic slurs at my family in my home. When her father came to pick me up, I have a Muslim last name, or an Islamic, Arabic last name. And I think he was very surprised to see a Muslim on my door. And when he approached my home, he stayed 15 feet back and he did not look at me and he did not speak to me the entire time. And no matter how many, how many times this girl is exposed to lessons about tolerance, no matter how many times the ADL comes in, or she's taught tolerance in the Holocaust museums, she's being taught these things at home. And I think the school board needs to have, part of when you're developing your plan, unfortunately, these incidents will happen because what's being taught at home will carry weight. And the children, unfortunately, some of them will be learning these things at home. And I hope that part of the plan that's developed does deal with real consequences for children who do, or for future incidents. Because the children, you know, we as Jewish parents, as whatever, whatever the incidents is, we have to explain to our children why they are still safe at school. And our children should not be made to feel unsafe at school. And the district needs to support us in that and not, and not protect the antagonists. Thank you for everything that you do and for your commitment to helping us keep the kids safe and feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alison Krisman. I'm here in Wilmette. I've got a rising seventh grader and a rising tenth grader in Nutria. I just wanted to echo that one of the things that I've been saying is what are the specific consequences? I understand that giving out the student's name is not appropriate and keeping certain things are private. I think it's really appropriate for everyone to understand exactly what will happen to you if you do these types of things at school. And I don't think the kids understand that because it's all, as far as I know, it's being kept secret and nobody knows. Or maybe it's being decided on an individual basis. I don't think that's okay. I also think there needs to be zero tolerance and very specific consequences, perhaps different based on the ages. And I understand that. But, and I think every student has to know specifically about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Cotton Kaplan. I have a sophomore and I have a rising eighth grader. I'm pissed off. I'm not going to be as polite as a lot of the other people. My sophomore experienced bullying at Ramona at Wilmette Junior High. I am Jewish. My family is Jewish. We're part of the lucky ones. My family came here before the Holocaust happened from Eastern Europe. You know, I had my idea listening to everybody. You guys have very specific contract with the students when they get their technology, when they get their iPads. They know exactly what they're supposed to do and exactly what they're not supposed to do. And they know there will be consequences if something happens to this technology. I think at every grade level, contracts should go home to the parents. And the kids have to, if they're in kindergarten, put a little X, the parents have to sign off on it so that they would know if somebody's bullied because they're gay, if somebody's bullied because they're handicapped in some way, if somebody's bullied because they're Jewish or they're Muslim. Good God, a Muslim girl at Nutria killed herself this year. I mean, what do we have to do as a community to get it through people's heads that this is not okay? People are being killed all over the world right now because of hate at synagogues in Philadelphia, in places, in mosques all over the place. Contracts have to be gone out and everybody has to know specifically, this is what will happen if you participate in this. Also, I think it's extraordinarily important for members of this community to be notified specifically what was written on a bathroom wall, what was written in a yearbook, what was talked about. I think if it's a Muslim family who gets hate or hate about them in the community, a Jewish person, somebody from another culture, an Indian person, I think that we need to know what we're up against. The world is too dangerous right now for this to be sugarcoated and whitewashed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Varuna Singh and my husband just spoke, but I wanted to add something to that regarding my son's experience being a mother. It was heartbroken what we have been going through for the last three years. And when I heard about what happened to the Nutria girl, and I witnessed my son like so many sleepless nights, so I'm here to discuss that. The resolution that Highcrest has provided, calling out, we have called out the names of the students. I think whatever the school authority does was not enough. Mr. Dubner and Ms. Sorich was a homeroom teacher. I think they did what they were supposed to do as for the, whatever you can say, the method of taking care of this problem. But I tell you that it was not being taken care. My son is continuing to be bullied and at last we have brought attention to Ms. Kelly Jackson. I don't know what will be the next resolution. We have gone through the school authority and I'm fearing that the things that is growing to the rate that we have been with a suicide and now it can be a next park district shooting that happened in Florida. I'm telling you that's what my fear is. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak? Then we'll move on to board reports. School finance, Mr. Fonzieke?
On Monday, June 10th, the committee of the whole back and the finance committee met as part of this meeting. We had another detailed discussion on our bond portfolio. We reviewed two resolutions that will be presented and voted on tonight. This is part of the process leading to a potential authorization of sale of bonds in March of 2020. The next step after tonight will be a public hearing in August. We continued with an ongoing look at our financials made possible by the new use of the tool Forecast Five. We are all seeing a lot of benefits from this tool and exploring the number of different ways that we can take advantage of it in more detail. We now have a bigger set of comparable districts to be able to look at how we are doing compared to a realistic peer set. The next steps are for discussions over the summer between board members and the administration on how to prioritize deeper dives. Tonight, we'll have some transitions of financial authority due to Dr. Kermit Scully taking over as superintendent until I first. We discussed that during the finance committee. And finally, we will, we authorized ongoing payments for July to bridge the gap until the next board meeting in August. This is an annual background event that we do every year to reflect the fact that we normally don't have a July meeting.
Now, the facilities development committee report. Mr. Myle?
We had further discussions about large space air conditioning priorities and reviewed a sample spreadsheet of how to, how the prioritized spaces might fit into our capital projects' funding timeline. The first priority was clearly air conditioning in the second floor classrooms at WJHS. After that, there was some discussion regarding timelines and questions about potential cost savings if we commit to purchasing the air conditioning units in bulk or tying the installation of the systems to previously planned projects over time, such as integrated enrichment, construction projects. So this is an ongoing conversation we're still looking into. And we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. We also discussed signing a two-year electricity contract through Future Green with a projected savings of $7,000 per year for two years compared with our current electricity service provider. Future Green's a non-for-profit clean energy provider that works specifically with school districts. That is the report for...
Thank you. Can we move on to the liaison reports? The CRC, Ms. Stone?
Yes. The CRC met on June 3rd here at the MECC. The CRC elected new-ish officers. Maggie O'Brien was reelected as president. Sarah Leahy was elected as vice president. Dana McLaughlin was elected as secretary. And the CRC also selected its topic for study for the next year, which is building better partnership with parents. And the next meeting will be in August. The exact date to be determined within the next few weeks.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the Illinois Association of School Boards. Mr. Myle?
It's going to be incredibly short because we are still in a voting pattern. There is nothing to report. I'll tell you when there is.
Thank you. Legislative update, Ms. Stone?
The General Assembly approved a balanced budget with an increase of $375 million for the evidence-based funding model. The statutory increase in minimum teacher salary of $40,000 a year will impact approximately half of all Illinois school districts. Senate Bill 28 was signed into law, which reverses SB guidance issued last fall about what constitutes an instructional school day, putting back into place the requirement of a five-clock-hour day with some allowable exemptions, including allowing all districts to utilize e-learning days in lieu of emergency days and allowing two of the 176 school calendar days to be utilized for parent-teacher conference days. Senate Bill 1814 passed containing a pension provision to raise current 3% end-of-year career salary increases to 6%. There are new curricular initiatives which will require that the following things be taught in Illinois schools: civics in grades six through eight, the history of Illinois in history classes, the role and contribution of LGBT individuals in society, consent to sexual activity in sex ed classes. Finally, House Bill 2627 has been approved, which requires that before detaining and questioning a student on school grounds who is under the age of 18, who is suspected of committing a criminal act, a law enforcement officer or other school security personnel must make reasonable efforts to ensure that the student's parent or guardian or school personnel is present during said questioning.
Thank you. That moves us to our information items. Dr. Leckner?
Yes, written communication. We had the board receive written communication from Beth Drucker, Amanda Nugent, Lindsay Jacobs, and Serena McBride regarding the Highcrest outdoor classroom.
Want to keep going with administrative announcements?
Yes. Eighth grade graduation, you got a nice taste of it earlier this evening. And on June 11th, at the Nutria Gates Gym, we have incredible celebration for 445 students that proudly moved to Nutria High School. And for next year, we have a tentative date already for Tuesday, June 9th of 2020. Next, the administrative for student services. We're recommending Dr. Kristin Swanson as the administrator for student services for 2019-20. Kristin is a veteran administrator. She spent the last five years as the assistant superintendent for student services in Northshore District 112. Previously, she was director of special education in Glenview District 34. And before that, she was an autism coordinator for NSSEB. She holds several advanced degrees, including a PhD in school psychology and a master's in educational leadership. She's an excellent fit for District 39. She's not here tonight because she's traveling internationally and she could not be here, but we're still recommending her. Next is the WEA collective bargaining agreement. The board will be voting on a two-year contract with the WEA. The board's negotiating team of Lisa Schneider Faves and Janssens Ruddy worked together with the WEA team. The agreement was ratified by the WEA on June 3rd. The terms of the agreement, agreement continued to tie salary increases to CPI. A provision was added for a limited match to 403 contributions for Tier Two teachers. And then there's additional funds available for tuition reimbursement. The contract is ready for your approval. Next is administrator's compensation benefits. Along with approval of the WEA contract, the administrator's compensation and benefits plan has also been updated and the two are aligned. It is also ready for board approval. Next, we have property tax assessment appeals. Intervention and property assessment tax appeals has been filed with the Property Tax Appeals Board and the Circuit Court of Cook County. These appeals are in accordance with policies and limitations established by the Board of Education. The property index number and the estimated refunds are listed for new property taxing or interventions this month. Next, we have a resolution authorizing July payments, bill payments. This resolution allows the treasurer to fulfill financial obligations during the month of July as the board has no meeting that month. Then we have the Illinois School Treasurer Bond Renewal. This is an annual event. The bond requirement is 25% of our highest cash balance throughout the fiscal year. The bond amount will remain the same as it was last year at 14 and a half The bond amount will remain the same as it was last year at 14 and a half million dollars. Renewal premium is less than 1% increase. And finally, the district submitted a final response to the FOIA originally submitted by Michael Day dated February 3rd, 2017, which he resubmitted on April 29th of 2019. The FOIA is in regard to long-term substitute information for multiple school years. Those are the announcements.
Uh, thank you. Want to continue with strategic plan updates?
Yes, tonight we review the 2018-19 strategic plan. For each section, the report will note the status of each initiative, a summary update and any applicable next steps. Katie Lee, along with the administrative team, have this report. Katie.
Thank you, Dr. Lutner. Um, first we will begin. So first we will begin with the new initiatives and Ellen Crispino will present on the school nutrition initiative first. The nutrition committee began by administering a survey to students and parents to gain information on the food service program. And this slide are the key results from the survey and the metrics we will use for measuring improvement going forward. On the left side, you can see 85.9% of parents indicated satisfaction or extreme satisfaction with District 39 food services. When students were asked the same question, 81.8% of elementary students, 79.6% of Highcrest students, and 68.8% of Willmet Junior High students indicated they liked the food provided by the schools. Then we asked parents and students about their satisfaction with the nutrition of lunch program. 84.6 of elementary parents, 79.9% of Highcrest parents, and 78.9% of Willmet Junior High parents indicated satisfaction or extreme satisfaction with the nutritional value of school lunches. When students were asked the same question, 68.2% of Highcrest students and 59.8% of junior high students indicated satisfaction or extreme satisfaction. As a result of the survey, the nutrition committee divided into subgroups and focused their research on four areas. The first area was nutritional quality. This subgroup compared ingredients of foods currently offered with cleaner alternatives as potential options. Cleaner is defined as having less preservatives, less food dyes, sugar and artificial sweeteners and/or trans fats. The second group looked at nutrition education. This group generated ideas on how to incorporate healthy eating into conversations and activities as well as encouraging students to make healthy food choices. The third group reviewed the time the students had available to eat lunch. And the fourth group focused on how to provide more vegetables, fruits, and proteins than what is currently offered. Based on the research, the nutrition committee recommends a year of trial and reflection during the fiscal year 1920 school year. Cleaner, healthier food options that are cost-neutral are planned for next year. The committee also generated a list of cleaner, healthier menu items to research that may have a cost increase. Next year will be about trying several new menu options, determining how well they are liked and the cost impact. We will also focus on improving nutrition education for parents and students, which will include communication regarding menu changes and nutrition facts. While there are many comments from parents and students about not having enough time to eat, the observations of the students at lunch did not reflect this issue. So school-based focus groups will be set up next year to further research this issue and to determine how much of this issue is perception versus reality. Thank you, Ellen. Uh, school nutrition will continue on the strategic plan next year as a continuing initiative. So under the strategic plan structure, differentiated instruction is identified as a year-one new initiative. And however, a more accurate description would categorize this initiative as District 39's commitment to continuous improvement in the ways in which we can meet the needs of our students. Administration has met this year's intended outcome. English Language Arts is taught through the workshop approach. This approach to teaching reading and writing promotes differentiation practices to meet the very needs of students. And alongside the classroom teacher, District 39 provides support and/or enrichment through full-time specialist roles. For mathematics, teachers differentiate with a similar process as English Language Arts. However, the review has led administration to recommend a more math-focused support in grades K through six. The delivery model of supports would be better aligned district-wide by shifting the K4 differentiation support teacher role to prioritize the math needs of students over other content areas and providing a full-time math support teacher for fifth and sixth grades rather than a shared full-time math support teacher. So next year, this initiative will shift to becoming a continuing initiative on the 2019-2020 strategic plan. The differentiated instruction initiative will embed two other initiatives, personalized learning and student growth. The intended outcomes will integrate the three initiatives by setting academic and non-academic goals based on student achievement, growth, and celebrations. Next, we will share the review of the continuing initiatives. The first one being kindergarten enrichment, which is in its second year. Administration has met this year's intended outcomes. The construction plan for Central and Harper Elementary Schools was completed. The Board of Education authorized the bidding process in February, approved construction bids in April, and construction will begin at Harper School this month. Central Schools' construction will begin in June 2020. The timing of Ramona and Mackenzie's construction requirements for Phase Two kindergarten enrichment will be, will be reviewed at the facilities development committee meetings in the fall. Starting in January 2019, the kindergarten enrichment committee, program committee began meeting to develop the optional enrichment program. Lessons and learning experiences will be designed to align with the goal statement that is presented on the right side of the slide. Committee members will focus on the following areas. Mathematics, literacy, reading and writing, science STEM, including nature. Arts, uh, which will include crafts, music, and movement. Social-emotional learning that emphasizes kindness, empathy, and resilience. Play, um, in the categories of socialization, cooperative games, self-regulation, and social thinking. And next year, this initiative will become a year-three continuing initiative on the strategic plan. Last year, the administrators learned about personalized learning and defined it as a guided instructional approach where learning is student-initiated, student-driven, and teacher-facilitated. It allows for learning experiences to address distinct learning needs. In a personalized learning environment, students take an active role in their learning by exercising their voice and choice in setting learning outcomes, establishing learning pace, and monitoring progress. This year, administration has met the intended outcome by auditing current practices using a personalized learning framework. The ministers have reflected on the current practices and have come to the conclusion that we need to set our focus on learner profiles and learning, personal learning paths. These two attributes are integral parts of how teachers differentiate instruction, addressing student needs to promote growth and learning. That is why this initiative, along with the student growth, will be integrated into the differentiated instruction initiative in the 2019-2020 strategic plan. I wanted to go on script a little bit to acknowledge that the administration has carefully and diligently listened to all of the feedback and especially the board's resolution as well as the community and the parents and have, um, taken down, um, the notes that I think the administration will really ponder and consider as we develop a more cohesive plan, um, to present to you with our strategic plan in the fall. But for now, we will report to you on how, um, we have progressed in this category. Um, so District 39 has always highly valued the importance of developing a positive school climate. And by recommitting to this initiative three years ago, the, the district has acknowledged the need to develop additional ways to improve. So within the first two years, the district has developed a public equity and diversity statement, provided parent education, staff professional development in, on the culture of diversity and inclusiveness in schools. We have engaged students in activities to further promote kindness, bullying prevention, confidence, self-esteem, empathy, diversity, and inclusivity. Provided staff professional development on District 39's bullying policy, the difference between social conflict and bullying and restorative practices. We have monitored and reported on cases of bullying as required by law. And we have approved and posted the statement of inclusion to District 39's website under its mission statement. We have also tried two social-emotional learning universal screeners, the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment, um, called DESA for elementary school-age students, and Mindsets, Essential Skills and Habits, MESH for middle school-age students. And this year, administration has met the intended outcome, and Angela DeMay will present the district's continued progress. So the information on the screen reflects, um, the data collected from the May benchmark assessments. District 39 students continue to perform well on screening assessments measuring social-emotional competencies. 95% of second graders and 92% of fourth graders were identified as being typical or strength category on the DESA assessment. MESH benchmark screening data from both the fall and the spring indicate that students in grades five through eights were above the 80th percentile nationally in all areas, including classroom effort, self-management, self-awareness, self-efficacy, growth mindset, and social perspective-taking. Additionally, school climate survey, I'm sorry, additionally, a school climate survey was administered that assessed how students feel about the school environment with respect to safety, teacher-student relationships, and sense of belonging. District 39 students have a strong sense of safety when compared with their same age and grade level peers, with sense of belonging and student-teacher relationships being identified areas for growth. Aligned with that, um, the social-emotional learning committee looked at several different curricula over the past year. Ultimately, we decided on selecting Ruler as the new curricula at the 5A grade level, with second step continuing to be utilized in all grade levels as well. Ruler is based on the idea of building emotional intelligence in both students and staff. The scientifically researched-based curriculum out of Yale University and uses anchor standards to help build a sense of connectivity and community by developing knowledge, attitude, and skills associated with a positive school culture. Most notably, the first anchor standard in the charter, is the charter, which involves staff and students in developing group norms to build consensus and congruence with respect to expectations and educational outcomes. Ruler aligns with the current positive behavior supports being utilized in the district. Ruler has a two-year rollout process, with the first year being dedicated to staff training. In the fall of 2019, District 39 will send a team of core teachers, service providers, and administrators to be trained. Ruler first initiates this rollout by training a district leadership team and then moves on to a school-based team. And then from there, teachers and staff will be trained, and finally, in year two, students receive the training that they need for a ruler. Thank you. Student growth is an ongoing area of focus for District 39. As a district, our goal has always been to use student, school, and district data to promote growth for all learners. To improve our efforts, District 39 focused on integrating student growth data and enrichment interventions into the multi-tier approach called Response Intervention. So this year, the Response Intervention Committee has reviewed the tiers of instruction, revised the tiers of support, to better define learning needs as not only additional support, but also enrichment and extension. Throughout the year, student growth data, both quantitative and qualitative, have been part of the conversation. Assessment reports and classroom performance provides a multi-perspective approach to understanding what students need in terms of instruction. Classroom teachers and differentiated support teachers have access to Eon grade-level standards to assist in determining learning targets for students. Next is school attendance, and Romi DeCristoparo will present an update on school.
We are really proud of the progress made in collaboration with families towards our positive attendance goal. This graph shows attendance trends in District 39 over the last five years. The green bar represents the percentage of students with positive attendance, which continues to trend up. Positive attendance is defined as being in school for 95% of the time or more, or having fewer than nine absences. While we fell short of our 75% goal, the percentage of students with positive attendance has increased from 63% in 2014 to 73% in 2019, and we have improved by 6% since we initiated our goal. The yellow bar represents our tier-two category. This category includes students who have been, who have been absent between nine and 17.5 times during the school year. This group has decreased from 27% in 2016 to 22% in 2019, suggesting that these students are gradually moving into the positive attendance group. The red bar represents the percentage of students in the chronically absent category. Chronic absence rates were at a high in District 39 during the 2014 and 15 school year, and our efforts to reduce chronic absences have assisted in bringing the percentage down to 4.9%. This graph shows the percentage of students with positive and chronic absence rates broken down by grade level. Positive attendance rates continue to be stronger in the elementary grades, and chronic absenteeism continues to be highest among our seventh and eighth graders. Our hope is that as students progress through the grades, healthy attendance habits established early on will encourage positive attendance in future years and as they enter the upper grades at the junior high. As we move forward, the established and successful attendance practices that have been put in place will continue, along with efforts to support our students who are struggling with school avoidance. Thank you.
The Learning Commons Initiative is close to being fully implemented. Ramona and Mackenzie Schools have exceeded the intended outcome set forth in the 2018-2019 strategic plan, and this concludes Ramona School and Mackenzie Schools' two-year cycle of monitoring its use and the application of the FORSEES as a formal part of the strategic plan. Kelly Jackson will now update the board on the plans for Highcrest Middle School. The Highcrest Middle School's Learning Commons will be added to the 2019-2020 strategic plan as a continuing initiative.
Over the past year, District 39 worked with STR architects to develop plans for Highcrest Middle School's Learning Commons. Uh, STR collaborated with staff and administrators, designed plans, and presented cost estimates throughout the year. Construction is approved and began today. As you can see by the renderings, the impact of the future Learning Commons will be felt on the outdoor classroom, uh, the current outdoor classroom. Maintaining a viable and inviting, maintaining viable and inviting outdoor learning spaces has been an integral part of the HMS Learning Commons planning. And one of the goals of the new space will be to connect the indoors and outdoors to provide increased opportunities for students to experience the outdoor classroom. Um, the, the top-left rendering shows, uh, the glass walls that are planned, and there are also doors in those walls. The cement that you see there is just for the illustration purposes. That's not what it will actually look like. And then the second drawing that you can see is, um, what the, the inside will look like, so you can see how transparent the outdoors is. Um, and, and this will be a space that's available to students throughout the school day as well as at recess and before and after school. Plans for the re-establishment of the outdoor classroom space have been developed as well and will occur in three phases. Phase one is taking place this summer as a part of the construction plan. It's the hardscape drainage and infrastructure design embedded in the STR design for the Learning Commons construction. Phase two will occur next spring after the completion of the building and hardscape. This will include landscaping and planting. Student voice will be very important to this process, as will staff input. Uh, $50,000 is currently budgeted for the implementation of the second phase. A third phase, planned for spring 2021, will include considerations of enhancements to the mini-farm, a potential rain garden, or possibly a new external garden to compensate for space loss due to construction.
The final section of the strategic, strategic plan addresses annual business topics. School safety. Administration has met this intended outcome. Since fall 2018, Tony Demonte, Administrator of Technology, Information, and Safety, has updated the Board of Education on the statuses of each safety item. Although all items on the phase plan was completed, ensuring the safety and security of students and staff in District 39 is a primary and ongoing goal. Within the past year and a half, one specific example of success has been the installation of security cameras and monitoring stations at the schools. Therefore, next year, administration will identify a new outcome focused on school safety and security. Kelly Jackson will share on the standards-based learning and reporting.
When planning for instruction, all teachers in District 39 use the Illinois State Board of Education Content Area Grade Level Specific Learning Standards to guide their planning, assessment, and activities in the classroom. These standards are aligned throughout the content areas and are regularly reviewed through the Curriculum Review Process. Student progress is gauged through a process of assessment and monitoring, understanding toward the final standard goals. Elementary report cards were reviewed and implemented in 2017-18, and they communicate student learning and progress in a detailed format. While we were prepared to implement revised progress reporting documents in a similar fashion for grades five and six at Highcrest Middle School, based on feedback and questions posed by parents at the start of the school year, we paused the implementation plan that was previously planned. This pause provided an opportunity to work with experts in the fields of standards-based learning and reporting, and to offer more opportunities for parents to learn and share their input. In addition to a parent evening with Dr. Tom Guskie, an expert in the field of progress reporting, Katie Lee and I hosted three parent-focus group meetings, one in the daytime, one at night, throughout March and April. During these meetings, we discussed background and rationale including standards on our reporting document, as well as the individual components for reporting. Parent feedback was collected and considered and changes were made. A parent information night was held on June 4th for any interested parents of rising fifth and sixth graders, and at this night, we explained and answered questions about the revised reporting card format and the timeline for reporting. If you look on the screen, you can see the components that are included in the Highcrest Report Card for the coming year. The purpose of the District 39 reporting system is to provide a communication framework amongst parents, students, teachers, and administrators that fosters each student's academic growth and the development of learner characteristics. The middle school report card components are learner descriptors, which are engaged, prepared, and self-directed -- probably need a magnified class to read up there -- which is consistent with the current format, and they will continue to be marked with a 3-2-1. So the 3 is for consistent, consistently, 2 is sometimes, and 1 is seldom. That has not changed from this year. Content standards have been added for detail in the specifics of what a student knows and is able to do in a content area. These will be marked with a 4-3-2-1. The 4 stands for extending and applying standards, a 3 for meeting standards, 2 for progressing towards standards, and a 1 for experiencing difficulty. Finally, a summative achievement letter grade based on a child's achievement with respect to all standards covered over the course of a semester will be given. The letter grades will be A, B, C, or D. This new format will be implemented this fall. And looking toward the coming year, we will share information with parents, and we'll host another parent information night to review the same components. Then after each quarter, really, or step in the progress reporting system, we'll gather parent feedback, as well as staff and student feedback, so we can make revisions if necessary.
Just to add, as we were transitioning, the parent focus groups were probably the best parts of this year because of the information that we gathered and the input that we were able to hear in order to make those revised changes that you saw. Okay, so the district instrumental music program is next, and administration has met this year's intended outcome. District 39 asked students for feedback directly in order to identify what is going well and what needs more attention. And during the week of January 22nd, students were asked to complete a three-question survey using a four-point rating scale. In addition, students were offered the opportunity to comment after each response. A total of 412 students answered the January survey, and 381 students answered the May survey. Based on these results, the instrumental music program will continue to check in with students in all areas with a goal target above ninety percent. In addition, particular attendance will be spent on the student's ability to reschedule a technique class in the event of a conflict. As we monitor over the course of next year, District 39 will report updates to the board as requested. The Science Curriculum Review Committee has completed the first year of the Science Curriculum Review. The work will continue next year with the intended implementation of a revised curriculum in the fall of 2020. For sustainability planning and practices, administration has set two intended outcomes. The first is an ongoing goal. District 39 continually seeks to achieve energy cost reductions and promote environmental literacy among students. And the second outcome has not yet been met. The district is still researching the feasibility of solar panels for District 39's school roofs that will produce an appropriate return, so this work will continue. So we presented on behalf of all of the administrators, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
First, I want to thank you. That was a lot of work. And board members, that was a lot of information. Questions from the board? Mr. Martin?
A second thank you. Quick question, which you may arena. You probably don't want to answer it, sorry. But I'm curious about the surveys for the music programs. And maybe it's more a suggestion. Did you break down the responses of the students? I'm most interested in, I guess, kids who have decided not to continue because -- or had very negative or negative -- looking at the 39 -- we get the kids that were very negative or negative overall experiences this year. And I guess I'd love to know the schedule of that was, I think, very challenging with the switching every day or whatever for kids that have executive functioning difficulty, and we have a lot of kids in our district with executive functioning issues. Because I'm just curious if we have any data on that.
Sure. Let me answer that first immediate one about the executive functioning. That was one of the feedback about being able to complete and manage any work that was missed. So the first question was our intent in addressing that. As far as the lower ratings, we have broken that down. We've actually broken it down to the grade level as well as some comments that are associated with it. And that was shared directly with the teachers so that they knew that it was for their particular group and that they should listen to the impressions of the students. And so then -- but as far as the students who did not continue, I apologize. Our survey was intended for the students that were participating in the program currently to make their experience with the new rotation cycle hopefully as better than it was in the past.
I just want to add one really quick thing. I have to say, no matter what, I was astounded -- I'm just going to say this as a parent. The teachers were amazing. They went out of their way to make this program work. I really was astounded this year by it. So I just wanted to add that as a positive.
I'll pass that on to them. Thank you very much.
The board members?
So first of all, as always, thank you to all of you. This is a ton of work, and we all know it's a ton of work. So thank you. I did want to echo sort of something implicit in Ellen's statement, which is that they're probably in the instrumental music program. It seems to me there probably is some selective selection bias in the sense that we're surveying people who stayed with the program, so I would hope that they would have relatively positive views. We did, when we originally did this work, we talked a lot about, you know, thinking about reasons why kids are dropping out of the program. I know that's very difficult to identify, but I have some sort of lingering concerns about that. Nonetheless, you mentioned a goal of ninety percent. For those, I love the fact that you are setting a goal. I think that's terrific.
We were listening.
In all candor. I mean, that's great. You know, maybe we'll get there, maybe we won't. But that is a terrific thing to do. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and we're going to talk a little bit more about growth later tonight, but the response to growth intervention category. You know, one thing that struck me when I looked through, for instance, the Tier Three support level, is we say this is -- this level is intended for students who have continued to demonstrate significant skill or performance deficits despite having prior interventions. So that, to me, is deficits in skill or performance is less about growth. Or the way I'm reading this, it's less about growth than about achievement, or have demonstrated exceptional knowledge and skills based on performance data or exhibited an extraordinary capacity for learning. So on that one, too, I feel like that's achievement rather than growth. One of the things that I'm wondering is, did we have a lot of students now that were identifying as high-achieving, but they get a RTGI because they're not -- they don't have the growth? Like, what do those numbers look like?
Yes, so actually, those numbers will be in the next report. There'll be a chart and everything, so.
Oh, I saw -- okay, good. I saw a different chart in the next report, but that's --
I could try to explain. So for the -- how we're defining or how we've rolled in the Tier Two and Tier Three. So the Tier One being the -- in the classroom, what everyone, all the students get and how we naturally differentiate. Or Tier Two could be what we consider to be our win classes, where we identify a particular strength or we identify a particular area. So Tier Three could be those exceptional outliers is what we were thinking. We have students in our district who are beyond grade level, and therefore, they receive instruction in that way. So either another teacher has come to teach them specifically, like a third grader who is engaged in fifth to sixth grade math. And those are those outliers that we look at at the Tier Three.
And I just want to be clear. I'm talking about something that I think is a little subtly different from what you're talking about, I think, which is, I understand that there are students that have very high levels of achievement or are struggling with an appropriate level of achievement, either end of the spectrum, right? I'm thinking more about the students who are struggling to get the growth they need. So they may be high-achieving, or they may be in the middle somewhere. I mean, it's a whole -- well, we've talked about it. You know, it's a different dimension, right?
So the first blush would be, you know, who are our high-achieving students? And then from there, looking at their goals that show that they're beyond grade level or they're more advanced, and then targeting those so that we can show growth. They need to be taught, or the intervention needs to be addressed based on goals and objectives so that they could actually show growth.
Okay. I just want to add that I totally get what you're saying, so I'm going to help communicate that. We have a holiday council on Thursday, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Other board members, Mr. President?
One of the advantages of having a really long and detailed report is I have many questions. A couple of simpler ones first. On the positive attendance, one of the things that pops out to me is that in seventh and eighth grade, and I understand that pressures get higher, puberty kicks in, all sorts of distractions, how we call it. But in light of tonight's theme, shall we say, discussion, is there any -- has there been any pareto of what causes the eight to ten percent chronic attendance problem in seventh and eighth grade?
We didn't go into detail like we did in the past when we, like, fully analyzed the chronic absences, but just I'm going to speak anecdotally about some things that we've observed this year. Is I do think that school avoidance and anxiety and social phobias are still prevalent at that age group. And then, of course, when we're working with students who are having those challenges, it's much easier, I think, for parents to help get their elementary students to overcome those. It's much harder to manage that at home with a seventh or eighth grader. So it's just a more challenging thing to kind of work through.
I have a follow-up question to add in this topic, but let me just kind of put it out there as a suggestion. A pareto of causes, even if it's only at a very, very high level, you know, three, four boxes, I think would add value, again, especially given tonight's conversations. Somewhat related, when we talk about improvement, it's -- I know we set very lofty goals, and we've made progress toward them, which is great. Do we know how much of that improvement was in the earlier grades versus how much of that improvement was from the seventh and eighth? Again, I come back to, you know, I would have -- I'm still surprised that we're near double digits in seventh and eighth grade chronic attendance. So was improvement in those grades, or did the overall improvement show up mostly in the earlier grades?
I don't have the data right in front of me, but I do know that we made progress across the grades, but not as much at the older grades.
Okay, so.
So, for example, a few years ago, and I can't remember which one, I don't have in front of me, chronic absenteeism at eighth grade was at eleven percent. So it's gone down, but it's still an area worth addressing.
Okay, so I think as a focus, getting the average number for nine grades where there's lots of different parameters involved isn't as meaningful as focusing on where there is a bigger discrepancy and seeing what we can do about setting goals that make those numbers get better?
Agreed.
Okay, a real small one. And again, ties back to the theme because I think it's got to be integrated in everything we do if we're going to make progress. On the SEL section, it was mentioned that, I think it was ninety-five percent. I'm not sure I wrote the number down right, but a very, very large number came back and said that they've met the standard. Without knowing the standard, without knowing the survey, in general, if we get ninety-five percent on anything, then we're not testing with the right gradation. So is there any -- what's the next step? So is there any, what's the next step? I mean, if 95% every year is, is great, that means we're not going backwards, and we're making, you know, we're, we're continuing doing well. But to do better, is there any other way that we can get more feedback, more gradation at that particular scale?
I think you're speaking about the elementary DESA assessment that went out, so I'll respond to that. So that is meant to be a screener, kind of like we do for academics. And our teachers use that to pull out any students who might need additional support. So for example, for, I think, the second grade and fourth grade, where we had something like 5% who showed up as needing instruction. That helps us think about how to target and provide interventions to those 5% of students at that grade. What else, it's also helped us too, because there were eight different standards that it looked at, it helped us pull out some themes. So when we're thinking about our second step curriculum, or lessons that we're doing in the classroom, do you remember off the top of your head? Was that like optimistic? Oh, there it is. So the different themes that showed up as patterns in terms of needing more instruction that our teachers can focus on in the future is goal-directed behavior, optimistic thinking, and social awareness. So broadly, it helps, helps us look at that. But then at the individual level, it helps us pull out students who need interventions.
Let's see, my next one, okay, the, basically the progress report section?
Yes.
I, I was able to attend the first parent meeting. And it was instructive, because it was, a lot of very strong opinions were brought up. I was not aware of and/or invited, you know, I'm not on all the mailing lists, and maybe that's something that needs to be improved. But I was not aware of the June 4th meeting. What was the tenor of that meeting compared to the earlier parent discussion?
So the, the June 4th meeting was for rising fifth graders and rising sixth grade parents of. And actually, we went through the same presentation, often the same information. And I'm happy to report that we got a little bit of applause at the end. We were able to, because of this, the, the crowd, able to answer those questions. I think our parent focus groups, the smaller ones that you were alluding to, that you didn't know about, those really helped us inform the way in which we explain and present the information in a manner that resonates with the parents. So using their feedback presented to this parent night, and they seemed to be, everything seemed to be well received.
Mr. Moon?
So I wanted to go back to the school climate, surprisingly. I have, I know that this is something that we're going to be discussing and reviewing and going over completely again this summer. And that we all made a commitment to that. But I did want to focus on a couple things specifically. You know, we, in the language here, it says, you know, we recommitted to this initiative three years ago. And then when you mentioned that the, that the, that Ruler was chosen as the best fit, you said that that would, that was going to take two years to implement, and it had, and it hasn't begun to be implemented yet. So basically, it's going to take five years to implement, I mean, from beginning to end, like a plan. So I just want to go back a step and just say, and I, I'm not sure about, you know, I don't know, I'm an educator, so, and I'm not criticizing, but I, I do, I am saying that in five years, we can already see in two years, by what I read, that everything has changed profoundly in our society. And this is such a changing, I hate to use the word target, but the target is changing so quickly, and this, in this particular topic. And I'm really concerned that we're, we've missed, or we are missing the boat on this. But the, the bigger concern is, is that there may possibly be, I just want to throw this out there, I don't know if it's a statement or question, maybe we could look at short-term and long-term goals? Because there's an urgency here, we heard it with all the parents that got up. There's, and, and I guess, one of my questions has to do with, there is a question here, with the DESA, the MEASH, all these tests that we've done. I really feel, after listening to all the parents that got up, and knowing, after having listened to comments and firsthand accounts of countless other parents, and their stories about, you know, words and bullying and actions and things like that against kids for all different reasons, differences, race, ethnicity, gender, identity, everything. That we're not somehow capturing the whole picture here. That, that these tests aren't capturing, or we are not somehow capturing all the incidents. And I don't know how we do that, I, I think, you know.
Yes, I.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, I, I definitely do. Thank you for an opportunity to clarify. You know, we have a curriculum. However, one thing that we reflected on, especially at the five bit level, was it just wasn't effective. And so we needed to find a better match, and so this was our journey to find one. So it's not as though, you are absolutely right about the short-term and long-term. Please consider the ruler as being the long-term, because we find that as a match, but in the short-term, we will address this. I believe that when you express your concerns about whether our assessments are, you know, addressing the, the primary concern right now, I want to show you, this, this topic of school climate is so vast. And I think what, if I may be honest, is we, we took bit off more than we could chew. And we need to really zone in that focus on some of the attributes that you're speaking of.
I also want to indicate that these assessments were not targeted for those. So what we have to do is look for something in addition to, or a different approach, you know. So, but these were not intended for that purpose.
That makes sense. And, and this isn't, this wasn't the blame game or anything, I just wanted to be really clear. I under, I even read reports on it that specifically stated how difficult it is to get kids to open up about those specific incidents in a school setting. Like, I understand that, but I, I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up, because when we're talking about this climate and the culture of empathy that we all know now is so crucial, that's why I wanted to mention it.
I just, I wanted to share also, just with respect to the MEASH. One of the, the, the areas that Angela pointed out, that was an area of focus for especially seventh and eighth, was a sense of belonging. And that is, it, it completely ties in to everything that we've been talking about tonight. I think that Ruler definitely, as we train staff, it will filter down to students, and, and it will become more robust, and we want to be very thoughtful with that. But you are exactly correct, and our, our goal is to have some short-term and long-term goals, and so we can start to tackle this sense of belonging head-on, and, and help it to be even more inclusive, and, and help it to really matter to our kids. Because through the conversations that we've had with our students, they know the right lines, they know the, they know the curriculum. And I think through Ruler, and through looking at some of our programs, we're looking for something that becomes more of the fabric of who we are. So that was one of the reasons that we adopted that.
Ms. Dunn?
I know Frank has more he wants to ask, but. Continuing the conversation about the areas the SEL screeners were intended to address, waiting till second grade seems like a long time to me. And I know we still have half-day kindergarten, I don't know if we could cram more into that day, but maybe explore the possibility of doing it earlier? Or maybe I'm just looking for reassurance that if our kindergarten, or, if our kindergarten and first grade populations do show lagging social emotional skills, that they're being run up the flagpole, and that interventions are being put into place.
When we selected to do this, I think last year, second and fourth grade, part of the reason that we did do kindergarten is because there were different assessments that they thought was, were redundant. And then also just keep in mind that at the elementary level special, there's always a social work referral process that happens at every grade.
Other questions before we turn back over to Mr. President?
I know differentiation.
Yes.
It, it overlaps somewhat with the, the next section on MAPGROW. So I'll save some of my questions for, for there, and, and see how many of them get answered with that presentation. But, but I had, I had a specific one on the differentiation section. And, and that was the discussion that. The exact wording, but the, the concept that math was identified as an area to focus on more. And, and first off, any time that we spend more time on math, I love math, is a great thing, so I'm not saying that it's a bad thing that we're spending more time on math. But two points there. One was, it, it looks like it was presented as a zero-sum solution, that we're going to spend more time on math by redirecting some of the things we do in other areas, taking less focused people and focusing more on math. Was any discussion made in terms of adding, you know, as maintaining or improving other things as well as improving math?
Yes, so when we were looking at the service delivery model, it was by refocusing the differentiation support teachers at the elementary level. And then we noticed that we had a half-time fifth grade, you know, math enrichment teacher who also taught half, you know, sixth grade accelerated. So what we've proposed is that there's a full-time math support teacher in fifth grade, and then a full-time math support teacher in sixth grade as well.
So it wasn't, it, it ran a little bit, so it wasn't redirecting differentiated instruction that covers other topics of math? It was just focusing the math differentiated instruction in a different way?
Yes, yes, yes.
And.
So you've actually added a full-time, but point five at fifth grade and point five at sixth.
That, that's great, and pretty much answered that question. But again, we, what, now that we're refocusing that, what's going to be the measurement? And let me skip forward for a second. One of the things that, that pops out to me when I go and look at the scorecards for our district, other feeder districts, and mattering of other random districts, is that, again, my point always is, are we preparing our students not just to do well, but be the best students at new career? And in the category of algebra, our, our percentage is like 95% of our students place in the geometry. The, the average based on at least the information that I get available in the scorecards for the other feeder districts are around 50% or below. So we're doing a really good job there. So what, what will we use as a measurement to say that this differentiated instruction is hitting the target? That more students are placed into accelerated math? More students meet the criteria for new career math? What's going to be the criteria that says that, that we're making even more progress?
So yes, you, you are correct, we are doing well in that area, especially because in eighth grade, we do offer the algebra curriculum, and that's why our students place into geometry. What we'd like to propose, and you'll hear in a little bit, is that our growth goals is going to be our metric. So when, I'll flash forward, so excuse me if I repeat myself later. But under differentiated instruction, you know, how will we know if we are differentiating effectively? For student growth, how are we going to know if we are meeting the needs of our students? And then as well as personalized learning, is that if we put that into place, how are we going to know? So really, it all comes down to the three of them working so well together, that the same metric could be used for us to determine whether the way we are meeting the needs of our students is effective as well. So yes, you are right, by the end, our students are showing that great, but I think we could do much more along our journey. And so as we follow the patterns and trends of growth targets, and whether they met them in the winter or the spring, that assessment data led us to really kind of focus and, and just reflect on how we are serving our students in, in math in that area. That is not to negate the other areas, but just this one in particular.
Okay, then we'll move on to MAPGROW.
This is working again. Okay, so we're going on to the next report. This is the executive summary of the math results from the spring of 2019, and it reflects our efforts for developing a student growth model. Katie Lee has this report.
Thank you. I will be sharing the 2019 math, MAPGROW assessment report with you tonight. And although this report will focus on the student performance of this assessment, as we all know, other performances like classroom and social emotional skills and, and other factors play into the success of our students. So here we go. In efforts to update the new board members, I'll share just a little bit of history, and then move on quickly. So for many years, District 39 used a different assessment called Performance Series to monitor student achievement. However, last year, we aligned with new career township schools and adopted the Northwest Evaluation Association's Measure of Academic Progress that I will in the future refer to as NWEA MAPGROW. The district administrators this computer adaptive assessment as one tool to monitor second through eighth grade students' achievement and growth in three times yearly, fall, winter, and spring. And students were assessed in reading and mathematics for the first time during 2017, 2018 school year. So this year produced the second round of data. The board will be presented with district average RIT scores, percentage of student scores in the average or above range nationally, and the percentage of students who have met projected growth targets within the context of grade level cohorts. And so when the students finish a MAPGROW test, a RIT score is calculated, and that indicates the level at which the student was correctly answering questions of similar difficulty and complexity 50% of the time. And RIT, as I've already mentioned, is an abbreviation for RASH unit, which is based on a stable equal interval scale. The equal interval means that the difference between the scores is the same, and measures students' performance regardless of age and grade or grade level. This report mimics the Fall Assessment Report in its displays. So this table presents the past two years of results for reading. And to serve as an example, the progress of our current fifth grade students of class of 2022 is highlighted on the screen. So that first row that you see is, shares the mean RIT score. The second row shares the percentage of District 39 students who fall in the average or above average range for achievement nationally. And the last row for each cohort is the percentage of students who met fall-to-spring projected growth targets. So based on this data, we have learned that District 39 students' mean RIT scores in reading indicate a performance that is a full grade or more advanced than national peers. The percentage of students who fall in the average or above average range for achievement has been within 90 to 99% range. And the percentage of students who met fall-to-spring projected growth targets has fluctuated between 50 to 70% range. The next table represents the past two years of results for mathematics. And based on this data, we have learned that the District 39 students' mean RIT score indicate performance that is at grade level range or more advanced than national. So there's a slight difference in those two subject areas. And like reading, however, the percentage of students who fall in the average or above average range for math achievement has been within the 90 to 99% range. And the percentage of students who met fall-to-spring projected growth targets, again, fluctuated from 50 to 70% range. So NWA provides end-of-year achievement status and growth summary reports that provides us more detailed information about the percentage of students who have met or not met growth, projected, projected growth. In this case, NWA MAP organizes students in four categories: high achievement, high growth, high achievement, low growth, high achievement, high growth, and low achievement, low growth. So for each of our classes, this type of report can be displayed. District 39's goal is to monitor students' growth for all students. So this table, hopefully you're looking at the pieces of paper instead of the screen. This table provides a percentage of District 39 students who fall in each category in reading by grade level. And the next one provides the same information, but in math. So to explain the percentage of students meeting or exceeding growth projections, Nate Johnson, who is a research scientist at NWA, shares that approximately 50 to 60% of students nationwide meet or exceed growth projections. So when reviewing the last two years of data, we've concluded the following. District 39's grade level growth results are consistent with NWA's research. District 39 students' mean RIT scores indicate performance that is a full grade or more advanced than national peers. And the percentage of students who fall in the average and above average range has stayed consistent within the 90 to 99% range. There's a few accomplishments that we were able to implement this year, and that is the integrated student growth and achievement data as part of the response intervention structure and collaborative discussions. Use reports provided by NWA MAP as an additional lens, not the only lens, but the, an additional lens while planning for instruction. And we analyzed data trends to reflect on how District 39 differentiates instruction to meet the needs of students, resulting in recommendations for support in mathematics and English. resulting in recommendations for support in mathematics and English language. So as you can hear, this journey's been a little long as we explore the student growth, but we have made strides forward. But the next steps for improvement are very important. I think that this will really begin to launch us in a in a very positive direction. So the for the next steps for improvement, we feel that these results suggest that we need to continue to support the practices that have been put into place this year. We need to provide additional training on assessments, interventions, and personalized learning paths. Shifting the focus for District 39, uh, I'm sorry, for K through four differentiation support teachers to prioritize students supporting math and provide math support teacher in fifth grade and in sixth grade. We would like to set district math reading and math growth percentages goals to be included in the 2019-2020 strategic plan. And these goals will serve as the metric for the differentiated instruction initiative, which will embed personalized learning and student growth. This is where I repeated myself, so excuse my chuckle. And then discuss current parent communication practices regarding student progress and adjust as needed. So at this time, I know that there's probably questions about this category, so I am happy to answer.
Board members? Mr. Dean?
Well, if you're going to call on me, then I'll come up with some questions. So first of all, I I did want to say, you know, thank you. It's it it's a long and continuing journey, but, you know, I do want to reflect on the fact that, yeah, we used to have Performance Series. Yeah, we couldn't measure growth. We found a better way. That's terrific. You know, we've talked for many years about these the types of reports we would have. And now we're getting these reports. I think that's great, you know. So I I really appreciate that work and that progress. I think those are terrific. Also, you know, based on your last the slide before that one, you know, I definitely feel like you heard some of my questions in my emails this afternoon, and I really appreciate that. Let me first ask, the the sort of top line here is continue to support the current practices. So I I guess I want to go a little bit deeper and understand, is there anything in these numbers that the district feels like says, okay, that's, you know, here's what our target should, based on this evidence, we need to focus more on X?
So based on these targets, I would say we need to focus on all the content areas, but most specifically to zone in on the math instruction as it progresses kindergarten through eighth grade. And I know what Mr. Panzika has mentioned. However, if you look at the reports and the in the depth that we've looked, there there's a trend where we can improve. I think we have lots of improvement in that area that would even make our outcomes stronger.
So I agree that there, you know, I think the the fact that you mentioned that math is at grade level and reading is a full grade level ahead is an important point. On the other hand, as I read through the reports, what I did was I looked at the sort of average percent of student per grade that is achieving or not achieving, do whichever one you want, their growth targets. And and frankly, the the reading looked a little weaker to me on in terms of that growth metric as opposed to sort of, you know, where are, what are they achieving in terms of grade? So I I'm interested to to hear that. I I'm not sure that I'm I've got the same conclusion yet. So maybe as we go through the strategic strategic plan, that's something for you all to think about. I I would though also say, as Mr. Panzika pointed out, it's not a zero sum game. You know, we can, we can work on both.
Yes, please, please know that even though I seem to mention math quite a bit, it is not to ignore English language arts or reading by any means. If I could show, so for an example of our current fifth grade, the class of 2020 for reading, when we look at the percentage of average and above average, we actually went down that a lot, but it's one percent as far as that. But our percentage of reading projected growth was it increased from fifty-six to sixty-six. And when I look at our intended focus on growth over achievement, I think that is one area that we feel like is trending more positive than maybe in math.
So I thought that that was, I I did a similar analysis. Actually, I looked at all twelve years, six years of math and six years of growth, for which we had year-over-year comparison scores on the on what's your table one and two, and then compared them to how the how our growth changed. And and it's a, it's a, you know, we only have two years of data, so it makes it tough to draw any comparisons or any conclusions, excuse me. However, what I did notice is if we look at the six, I'll say, worst low-growth areas, it's actually the highest number in terms of low-growth, but it's the the worst. So out of those six, we actually declined, as you point out, they're all small declines. We actually declined in three of those six, and we stayed level in two. We only increased in one. If you look at the six best growth areas of places where we had the lowest percentage of students not meeting their growth targets, sorry, it's a little confusing, but you know. There we actually had four different areas where our achievement increased, one where it stayed the same and one where it declined. And so, you know, my conclusion from this is twofold. One is, you know, really focusing on the growth will get us to the achievement. And the other is that, you know, it's a bad idea to give me data because I'll do this kind of thing all the time.
We enjoy it.
Well, in any case, I think so, okay, I think there's there, you know, you're being thoughtful already about how to focus our efforts. I look forward to continuing that conversation because I think there's a lot of depth and information there. Another, and I apologize to my colleagues, another, I'm going to make two more points. One more, one is, you know, as we go through the that last point there, discuss parent communication practices regarding the student progress, this is what I was getting to before with the RTGI. And so let me sort of reiterate, I didn't see in this report, were there, you know, how many students did we say, ah, this is a high-performing student, but we need to get them an RTGI because they didn't have the growth we expected? Are we doing that this year? How much?
We've definitely had those conversations this year, but I think we can do better. You know, the start of using this data and helping the teachers address it or or refer to it on a regular basis is something that we are encouraging and and continuing to promote. So definitely, that will be part of it. The other thing too is in, I know I keep bringing up this system, but in Educlimber, when we get the end of the growth data uploaded, what we've done is we've created these bars, and this is new, this is this year end. So and it's happening right now. So we have these gray bands. And what's nice about this system is that when you hover, you will see and and click, then you can see the list of students right away that are high achievement, low growth, or low achievement, low growth, and all the other two categories as well. So again, I think we're getting to a point where all of this data is instantaneous, and we've been building that for the past couple of years. So it will even increase the conversation once we provide the, you know, necessary training.
So it's great. I think we're, you know, giving teachers the right tools. The first step is to know what's going on, right? And having a nice descriptive school like that is terrific. I I guess I wanted to make sure I I tied the the point together in saying that, you know, the to me, part of the RTGI is the parent communication, right? So, you know, hey, your kid's doing great on achievement, but we're a little worried about the growth. Let's talk about how that goes. And I I think that's something that will help us in a number of ways, including educating the parent community, which is where if we start to move our district's goals towards growth goals, we'll want to make sure we're bringing along the parents so that they understand the advantages of that.
Right, absolutely. We need to definitely reflect on our practices there. It's just currently, even with as far back as Performance Series, that wasn't a natural part of the conversation. We sent home the reports as a summative in the spring, but we will definitely reflect on during our meeting or thereafter, how should we approach communication and what is the best venue, what is the best format for that?
Great. I love seeing the nineteen-twenty strategic plan so that we have, you know, a real timeline here. You know, I wouldn't mind seeing even more sort of, hey, here are our near-term deadlines, but I know we're in the process and we'll get to those. And but as we go through this in the fall and talk about this, I'd love to see those goals. And you definitely did hear me on setting targets. The last question I have is, you know, we did, one of the reasons that we found math attractive is because we could compare to other districts nearby. And I'm just wondering, do we have any data from our other feeder districts?
So we have placed the order. If we go through NWA Math, then I, you know, I've placed the order. And so I was anticipating this type of report to be in the Fall Assessment. And so you will receive information there from NWA. We do have a data consultant. I don't know to what extent we are continuing to use him for the township, but I could submit our scores and he can do run an analysis as well. So I think we have two different opportunities to get the information that you'd like, that I could present in the Fall Assessment report.
And then that's great, thank you. And and I just want to sort of tag on to that. You mentioned that, you know, fifty to sixty percent achieving growth according to NWA is a, you know, is a pretty typical nationally. I want to make sure that we are.
Aiming higher.
Well, aiming, yes.
We will aim higher.
And aiming appropriately, right? Because if that's sort of a national average, we we are a different district than most national averages. So, you know, that's why I am sort of making sure that we get an appropriate peer group. And I'm sure you all appreciate that because we've talked about that.
Absolutely, because we also have to juxtapose the fact that we're a higher achievers, where our mean RIT is beyond the national peers. So absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Other board members?
We've gone through a number of years where we had really great longitudinal data, and it's not been any of anything that that we've done, you've done. And so it's nice to start getting some longitudinal data. So that's great. It it opens up some different type of questions. And and again, I I applaud what we're trying to do in math. And I like, and I'll say it again, I love math. And I think it's really important that we keep that focus, so that's that's really good. However, it looks like there is some noticeable differences for how well we do in math and in ELA. And ELA is not as good. So one category that I I was looking at was, again, high-performing district. Our goals are better. Our goals aren't to be, you know, better than the average. Our goals are to be, you know, as high as it can be. In in math, when we look at the national mean scores, we we keep going up and we get farther and farther above the outside range in the math as we get into seventh and eighth grade. That's a nice trend. In English, we basically don't improve that much. If you look at, I mean, and you hear, I'm sure, but our grade six and our grade seven mean RIT scores are the same. Our grade eight mean RIT score is just equal to the top range of the mean. And again, that's just one way of looking at it. But in the math side, in eighth grade, we're five points above the the mean. So that's a concern. We look at in reading, meeting projected growth in seventh and eighth grade, fifty-one percent. In math, sixty-three percent. So that's another concern that in reading, we're not potentially doing as well in terms of of making some of these goals. The so those are some some areas that I think should cause us to look more at ELA. In math, we have a number of of things. We have accelerated math, we have NutriR math, we have quantities of students that place into each one of those. We look at those yearly. We have the algebra score, which again, the geometry placement, which we're doing really well on. What what is our NutriR assessment? What is our end game, you know, we did well in ELA goal? Do we have a a standard? Should we have a standard? Where is that?
In all honesty, as far as the NutriR impact, I don't have a response right now, but I will definitely consider that. As far as our next steps for improvement, however, the providing the additional training on assessments, interventions, and personalized learning paths, you know, overlay with the workshop approach to reading and writing instruction, I believe will target reading and writing instruction in that area. So if you would, if you will allow me to think about it as and speak with my team, and then we will circle back with you. But I I honestly don't know how to answer the NutriR connection part.
So I'd like.
Or reading especially.
I'd like to get that on an agenda. So August may be too early, given, you know, summer and all that. But I don't want to wait another year before we have this conversation. So if we could come back with a specific time, you know, range of when you'd have some more information on that, that would be appreciated. And then then the other one that I brought up before and have not heard again tonight is the, and again, that's the difference in ELA, not as much of a difference in math, but the difference between the boy's scores and the girl's scores. Do you have these numbers broken out between boys and girls?
It is, it is possible to break these down into the genders.
In the scorecards on, I just want to address the gender thing because we decided before that gender is not an area of focus. And we have experts from Northwestern who told us that we would be wasting energy.
All right, so I, so just just to point it out, though, in the scorecards, there's a fourteen percent difference between boy's scores and the girl's scores in reading. And it fluctuates in in the in the slow single digits for the differentiation in math. Fourteen percent is a big number. And if we don't have, if we're not even measuring it, we're not even looking at it, then I'm concerned that that means that that we don't have a way of addressing it.
All the research talks about long-term outcomes, not short-term. I don't, I don't know what the fourteen percent is. I'm not sure what you're referring to. But all of the research that we've done, all of the academics from Northwestern said that it's it's long-term. It's not the short-term fifth grade, whatever gender differences that matter. It's more about careers and things that happen post-college even. And the the gender differences all come together by the time they're adults, except for in computer science and also physics. That's it. That's what the research shows. We can bring that back. We can bring that research back.
Yeah, the 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 scorecards that are available, the Illinois State scorecards, do bring it out by male, female. Yes, the nationals, the state standard has those type of double digits. Most of the, many of the feeder schools to NutriR have those double digits. Kennerworth, by the way, does not. Kennerworth has like a three or four percent difference. But my my question is, I I understand, you know, long-term and and all those those type of things, but we prepare our students for NutriR. And if there's a fourteen percent difference, that means going into NutriR, there is a statistically significant, and the studies you did before, the statisticians came back and said it was statistically significant. There's a statistically significant difference for how they're going to start NutriR. We can't directly control what they're going to do when they're twenty-five. We have some control over how they do when they get to NutriR. And I'd like to continue to have that discussion. At the very least, I'd like to see the data between boys and girls.
Just one last thing. There are statistically significant differences at younger ages. It's natural. It's it's not nothing, because we 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 addressed this years ago, and that we couldn't make a difference. It was not a meaning, and what we learned was that it wasn't a meaningful approach. So I'm going to leave it there.
Okay, I I just one, one last one along those lines. I I just, just one, one last one along those lines. When we look at math scores and we say, how do we help more girls get involved in STEM? We don't say that it's an inherent thing and don't worry about it. Um, I think the fact that that we say that about ELA for boys is is something that we should consider whether other places do it better. We can do better than other places. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Other folks?
Yeah, Mr. W. I just have a quick question, just because you actually mentioned, Katie. I can't believe I didn't think of this earlier. But you mentioned a couple of times with this, um, you just, you said reading and writing. And this is a reading assessment or reading and writing?
This is just reading. Absolutely, yes.
Where do we assess the writing?
Uh, we have, uh, common assessments embedded into our curriculum. Um, so most of the time it would be a writing prompt that a particular grade would all participate in and using a common rubric. Um, that is how it's assessed. There's no, uh, this type of assessment for writing because, uh, the computer generated scoring is just really not there yet.
Maybe in the future. That's unfortunate.
It is. I know our writing teachers would love that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
And I'll just, uh, add my two cents here. Um, I'm not an educator, but when I initially saw these numbers, when I looked, for example, fifty, forty-nine percent of the eighth graders in math did not meet their projected growth, um, that was a surprise to me. And, um, I feel like we should be aiming higher as a district. Where significantly more students than fifty percent meet their growth targets each year.
Um. So one of the.
Oh, sorry.
Your point is good.
Whether it's reading or math, the percentile feels too low.
Yeah.
It's a percentage.
Agree. Um, what we've tried to do too is there's a, I don't need to get into it too deeply if you don't want. But there, there is a way to say that, uh, the students have, you know, met their growth or they were really close. We have a number of students that were maybe one point off of meeting their growth. They grew. They grew multiple points, but they just didn't hit that target. And so they're within that standard error. And so we've been trying to drill down. I just didn't have enough time since the end of school. But, uh, we're trying to drill down into what those subcategories are. So there is a no but category of students who are very close in achieving their growth targets. And that's an area that we should focus on as well.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna move on. Well, I wanted to make sure, did I get everybody? Um, so we'll move on to annual business. Dr. Lechner?
Yeah. District thirty-nine collects and monitors data around reported instances of bullying. This is a newer report that is to be presented to the board annually. This school year, District thirty-nine improved its data collection and tracking. And that's important because with better data collection, then we have a, we have an opportunity for establishing a baseline. And Dr. Disparo has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. Bullying is defined as any severe or pervasive physical or verbal act of conduct, including communications made in writing or electronically directed toward or intended to specifically target a student. Recognize that, uh, more work needs to be done in this area, but there are a number of proactive measures that District thirty-nine takes to prevent bullying, build empathy, and support a safe and inclusive environment for all students. We continue to utilize a second step curriculum, which includes a supplemental unit on bullying. At Highcrest and Womack Junior High School, students have engaged in a variety of activities that promoted a culture of empathy and being upstanders. During the month of October, hashtag we are upstander events included daily announcements, assemblies, a kindness challenge, Unity Day, and opportunities for staff and students to create and share upstander videos and stories. All reported cases of bullying are investigated. Last school year, there were only four documented reports of bullying, which resulted in two founded cases. This school year, there were seventeen reported cases of bullying that resulted in five founded cases. Four of the founded cases involved junior high school students, and one case involved an elementary student. Of the five founded cases, three of the cases occurred at school in non-instructional areas, including the locker room, bathroom, and hallway. Two of the cases involved cyberbullying outside of school, but impacted students in the school environment. With each reported case of bullying, administrators and staff worked with the students and families to ensure the student being targeted was safe and to engage in restorative and educational conversations. Overall, most reported cases of bullying continue to be a social conflict. The increase in documented bullying reports and founded cases is likely due to improvements made in our documenting and reporting procedures. Additionally, at Highcrest and Womack Junior High School, administrators emphasized anonymous reporting procedures and encouraged students to report any potential acts of bullying. As such, last year's low incidence of reported bullying is most likely an underestimate, an underestimate, and we suggest considering this year's bullying data as a baseline as we continue to monitor bullying district wide. Are there any questions?
Board members?
Mr. Stine? I just wanted to echo the, um, thread that somebody, I can't remember if it was you or Katie or maybe it was Kelly tied together a little earlier because I think it really does tie this nicely, which is I I appreciate the fact that you're recognizing that there probably weren't only four cases of bullying and probably weren't only seventeen cases this year either. And we also identified earlier tonight that need for a trusted adult for each and every student. And obviously, those things go together hand in hand. So I'm I'm looking forward to the work we'll do on that. One of the things that's really wonderful is that I'm excited about is sad as we are to see rate go. You know, I was looking back at our announcement of Dr. Kremescoli, and, you know, she's done some really terrific work on having, I think it was above ninety percent of kids in the district say they had a trusted adult within the district. So that's something that's a, you know, what a wonderful thing for us to be able to look at and and move towards. I think that hopefully will help a lot also with our reporting and then with our resolution. Thanks for the report.
Other comments or questions?
I think it'll.
Um, I understand that this would probably have to be anecdotal rather than statistical, but I just wonder what's typical for our peer schools of similar sizes. I know we're just beginning to gather this, but, um, you know, knowing that this is underreported, as it is everywhere, just what we're going with.
Other board members? Good, thank you. Dr. Lechner?
Yes, next. Next, we'll move to the consolidated district plan. In order to be compliant with the State Board of Education rules and regs, we're informing the Board of Education that ISBE now consolidates all grant information into a single platform. District practices, uh, on use of grant funds have not changed. And Katie Lee, is there anything to add?
Just a little bit. Um, for it just, uh, what this means is that the Departments of Student Services, Curriculum Instruction, and the Business Office will collaborate in submitting a district plan for the grants that we apply for, which is Title I to NIDEA. And, uh, we just needed to, uh, do diligence for, um, informing the Board of District Practice.
Okay, next. Okay. Um, this is the resolution declaring the intent, uh, intention to issue, uh, five million in working cash bonds. Uh, this resolution is to announce, uh, the public hearing scheduled for August twenty-six, twenty nineteen, and the district's intent to issue five million dollars in these bonds. The sole purpose of these bonds is for necessary capital improvements to district facilities. Ellen Crispino has this report.
Thank you. The Facilities Development Committee reviews recommended facility improvements on an ongoing basis. In addition to the Highcrest and Harper construction projects starting this month, additional construction and renovations will be required at the other elementary schools as part of the Faseday kindergarten enrichment implementation plan. In addition to construction for new initiatives, it is important to repair and maintain the district's existing facilities, including windows, roofs, and boilers, for example. For the property tax limitation law, the amount of the debt service extension based tax levy for the bonds will not change, except for increases associated with CPI. The timing of the bond refunding and the issuance is planned in March of twenty twenty to keep debt service payments relatively flat.
Board members, any questions? Comments? Okay, next.
Next is the, um, resolution, uh, expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds on the obligation to be issued by the district. What this means is that, uh, the reimbursement resolution will allow bond proceeds in March of twenty twenty to reimburse prior, prior capital expenditures in the O and M fund. So this gives the district flexibility. Since we have two construction projects this summer totaling seven million dollars, it's Highcrest and Harper. And, um, Ellen Crispino, anything to add?
No, nothing.
Board members, questions? Comments? Dr. Lechner, you want to continue our transition items?
Yeah, we have three transition items tonight. Uh, first is the resolution reauthorizing, uh, participation of liquid asset fund. And due to the change in superintendent, we need the board to authorize employees that are approved to make investment transactions at PMA. Approved employees include the superintendent, the business manager, and the controller. And when you approve this tonight, it's effective July first, twenty nineteen. Next, we have, uh, a need for new signatory on the Activity Fund payroll in our general bank accounts. Again, because we have a new superintendent, we need the board to update the approved check signers on our general payroll and activity fund accounts. And once again, um, the check signers are the superintendent and the business manager. Again, this is effective July first of twenty nineteen. And the third item is to appoint Dr. Carrie Kremescoli as the Secretary to the Board of Education, beginning July first. Um, she'll be succeeding me as the new superintendent. And the district's practice has always been to have the governing superintendent serve as a secretary to the Board of Education.
Do board members have any comments or questions? Uh, then we'll move on to board policy review. Dr. Lechner?
Yes, and we had no additional feedback provided from, provided from the first to second. All right. Provided. Okay, there we go. Ooh. The policies, the policies presented for second and final reading are the same as those presented at the May boardy, board meeting. Dr. Glick, do you have anything to add? No.
Great. Um, then this is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? If not, we'll continue with our agenda. Um, action items, Mr. Panzika, uh, consent agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Mr. Panzika, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the personnel report dated June seventeen, two thousand nineteen. I move to approve the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one contractual agreement between the District Thirty-nine Board of Education and Womack Education Association, WEA. I move to approve the two thousand nineteen Administrator's Compensation and Benefits Plan. I move to approve the appointment of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Administrator for Student Services. I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing payment for goods and services between now and the next board meeting scheduled for August twenty-six, two thousand nineteen. I move to approve the attached renewal of the State of Illinois School Treasurer Bond in the amount of fourteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. I move to approve the two thousand nineteen Consolidated District Plan. I move to approve the appointment of Dr. Carrie Kremescoli as Secretary to the District Thirty-nine Board of Education, effective July first, two thousand nineteen. I move to adopt the resolution reauthorizing participation in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund by the board at the school district on behalf of which the treasurer acts. I move to approve Carrie Kremesco, Dr. Carrie Kremescoli succeeding Dr. Raymond Lechner, Superintendent, as new signatory for the Activity Fund payroll and general bank accounts, effective July first, two thousand nineteen. I move to approve a second and final reading of the Board of Education Policies, three colon thirty organizational chart, four colon one five zero faculty management and building programs, four colon one six zero environmental quality of buildings and grounds, four colon one six four forecasting enrollments, four colon one six five evaluating existing buildings, four colon one six six determining extent of new construction, four colon one seven zero safety and security, four colon one seven five convicted child sex offenders screening notification, four colon one eight five property control and valuation, four colon one nine zero monies in school buildings, four colon two hundred use of personal property, and seven colon one nine zero student behavior. I move to approve to release to the public the executive session minutes of April twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, June twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, March nineteen, two thousand eighteen, June eighteen, two thousand eighteen, October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, November fifth, two thousand eighteen, November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, February eleventh, two thousand nineteen, February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, March eleven, two thousand nineteen, March eighteen, two thousand nineteen, April fifteen, two thousand nineteen, and April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. I move to approve to dispose of the executive session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for the following dates, September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, and December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, in the following amounts. Educational fund, eight hundred and six thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. O and M fund, four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Debt services, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Transportation fund, two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Capital projects, thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Tort fund, twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. For a total, all funds of one million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. I move to approve the manual checks issued between May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and June seventeen, two thousand nineteen, in the following amounts. Educational fund, five hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents. O and M fund, three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Transportation fund, three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. And the tort fund, two thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. For a total, all funds of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents. I move to adopt the resolution.
I think that's, I think that's all.
That's later. Okay, great.
May I have a second motion, please? Second to the motion.
Seconded.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Andy Kayling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Paul Sternweller?
Yes.
Darren Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schaller?
Yes. The ayes have it, motions carried. Next, they need a motion to approve the bond resolution.
I move to adopt the attached reimbursement resolution to allow bond proceeds in March, two thousand twenty, to reimburse prior capital expenditures.
May.
That's a C, but that's fine.
May I have a second motion, please?
Second.
The motion has been moved and carried and moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Andy Kayling?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Paul Sternweller?
Yes.
Aaron Schaller?
Yes. Yes. Next, they need a motion to approve the bond resolution.
Out of order, but still in the, in adoption. I move to adopt the attached resolution to announce the public hearing scheduled for August twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, on the district's intent to issue five million dollars working cash fund bonds for the sole purpose of making capital improvements to the district's facilities.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Andy Kaylin?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Paul Sternwiler?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schlepper?
Yes. The A's have it. Motion carries. Next is conference items. Old business. New business. And good in welfare.
I have a couple of things. One is that I went to the Unframed Art exhibit at the junior high and was blown away by the art that I saw and want to thank the foundation for all their work in putting that on and that I love that we have a district that prioritizes the arts. Two summers ago, both of my kids took the photography class taught by Mr. Wilson. My son broke a bone and had to pull out of the sports camp and spent his time in the photography class doing one of the coolest things, I think, either one of my kids has ever done in the district, was to create a picture of himself where he superimposed over his pupil and his eye a blobfish. So that's item number one. Item number two. Knowing you're penchant for costumes and the fact that you were a wizard in the Mackenzie Halloween Parade in 2010, I'm going to quote Gandalf the Grey, who said that all we have to decide is what to do with the time that is given us. And you have done an amazing job with the time that has been given you here in our district, and we are lucky to have had you here. During the graduation, I was overwhelmed by the amount of students that were going across the stage, and you multiply that by all of the ones that have gone across the stage since you started here back in the Clinton administration, and the ones who haven't gone across the stage yet but who are in the rank and file of our school system, and I want to thank you.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Lechner, I want to offer you our sincere thanks and congratulations as you move on to the next chapter in your life. Since 1999, when you took over as District 39's first administrator, dedicated solely to student services, the positive impact you've had on our school and our community has been remarkable. Some notable accomplishments we wish to highlight are your visionary work starting District 39's Inclusion-Based Early Childhood Programming in 2001, your decision to pull out a NSSED in 2005 and replace and improve those services locally, your critical role in crafting and passing the 2011 referendum, the outsourcing of our busing system, the initiation and expansion of our first one-to-one learning program, the recognition of three District 39 schools as blue ribbon schools, the completion of numerous facility projects, including new learning commons throughout the district, your support for the Board's negotiation of multiple teacher and staff collective bargaining agreements, including a critical change of philosophy from a salary increase schedule to a CPI plus, the adjustment of the school start and end times to benefit student health and teacher preparedness, and your leadership in finding a viable path to full-day kindergarten. In addition to these more concrete accomplishments, you also have influenced the district in many softer ways through your leadership style and the expectations you have set for those around you. Those soft accomplishments are often even more critical than their more concrete counterparts because they steer the culture of District 39. Some of your positive, some of the positive behaviors that you've modeled and expected of your staff include emphasizing and glowing and growing our culture of inclusion, develop your employees into positions of increasing responsibility within and outside the district, ensuring the financial strength, stability, and transparency of the district, fostering strong community relations, and laying the groundwork for a smooth succession to the next superintendent. Again, these are just a sample of the many ways in which you have enhanced District 39. Ultimately, you have served the district with full dedication. As you know, for the reasons cited above, the Board chose to rename the Early Childhood Inclusion Program in your honor this year. We believe that the Lechner Early Childhood, I mean, Early Education Program will continue to be a source of pride for the district and an important source of fun, learning, and growth for many hundreds of both typically developing and special needs children that it will continue to serve in the future. In addition, current and former board members worked with the Illinois Holocaust Museum to purchase and plant a maple tree at the MEC today. This tree was grown from a maple tree sapling planted and nurtured by the children in Trenton Concentration Camp in the Czech Republic during the Holocaust. Few of the children survived, but this sampling from their tree lives on for all to remember. Don't do that, you're gonna make me cry. Dr. Lechner, your impact on our district, our community, and our children has been immense. Many educators, when they first enter the profession, hope to give children positive experiences that will improve their whole lives. You have done exactly that, many times over. We believe that you should be very proud of the work that you've done for District 39. We are proud to have been on this journey with you. Thank you. Well, I think other board members might want to, so it's okay. From my first interaction with you, when I moved to Willmett and began advocating for full-day kindergarten, you were open-minded, curious, willing to think creatively, and able to make difficult decisions in the best interest of the district. You have executed your role with integrity, humility, and a clear focus. You view each challenge as an opportunity for improvement. But the sign of a truly excellent leader is one who leaves a district poised to continue to exceed well after you're gone, and you have done that. You have filled our schools with people who believe in our mission and have the skills, determination, and passion needed to continue doing the work that you've started. So add my voice to the many who offer a heartfelt thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I'll give a pause for some. I think the most important thing that you can say is that did you leave the place better than it was before? I think this school district, we set our standards high. We don't care about average. We don't care about above average. We care about spectacular, and I think you did that. I think you exceeded expectations in many, if not all, parameters, and you, by any measure possible, left this place better than when you came, and that's all you can ask for. Thank you very much for being here.
I, we've had lots of thank yous, and I certainly, I want to add my voice as well, but I'm going to do it also from a personal perspective. We've worked together for six years and even longer than that, and, you know, I've learned a lot from you, and I really appreciate that. I've learned about education, but I've learned about leadership, and I've learned about how to work with the community and how to move people in directions to improve, ever improving and ever stepping into change. So I wanted to, you know, we've had some roller coasters, we've had some tough things to do, and we've had some fun jokes and that stuff, and I just want to say, you know, I really appreciate all of that time together, and thank you.
I'm not sure I can speak without getting all choked up. Ray, I don't think my family would be here if it weren't for the work that you've done, honestly. And so you laid the groundwork for families like mine to be here. And I told you already that, you know, I think things happen for a reason, they truly do, and the timing of things that have transpired, I think, is a testament to the work that you've done. I think nothing right now could be, could have happened moving forward now as well. I think, I don't know which of you said it the best, but you've laid the groundwork as well to allow us to move forward in an amazing way and do better as well. You laid the groundwork initially for inclusion, and I think the world has moved past the word inclusion. It's not about inclusion anymore, and I think it's amazing you allowed that to happen, and now it's about recognizing that everyone has differences, and we are allowing for that, and now we're going to make sure that we are respectful of that in everybody. And I just, all I can say is thank you for that, and thank you for creating this wonderful environment to allow for those changes and the changes that we're going to make going forward with Carrie now.
I'm going to circle back and just be really brief, and it's something I said at the Board Member event in which they surprised me with the tree, which is the essence of who I am, which is all about diversity and inclusion. And for me, it began in 1990 when we did our first pilot of inclusion in Orland Park, and we brought a little girl in from the co-op class into the regular classroom. She couldn't speak, she was in a wheelchair, and within two weeks, she was smiling and happy and making friends. It was that child that pushed me forward, so I'm going to end by saying it's all about the children.
Thank you again, Dr. Lechner. I guess we have to carry on with the meeting. May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a student matter and specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss a student matter and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll?
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Andy Kaylin?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Paul Sternwiler?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 9:43.